All right, I have 5:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. Before we get started, I have a few housekeeping items. This virtual meeting is held in accordance with Public Act 254 of 2020. As such, all votes by board members will be by roll call. Also, when we were attendants, all commissioners are required to give their location, the city or township, the county, and the state in which they are participating. There will be two calls of the publics, one at the beginning of the meeting, one at the end, so the public can share their thoughts and comments with the Board of Commissioners. It's not a two-way conversation. It's an opportunity for citizens to present their point of view on any issues that they desire. We limit it to three minutes. We ask that participants provide their name and address before they present their information. Lastly, this meeting is being recorded. However, the minutes of the meeting, which will reside with the clerk, are the official record of the meeting. If you wish to record the meeting on your own computer, please indicate your desire to do that by using the Zoom Raise Your Hand feature, and you'll be provided ability to record the meeting. Lastly, I skipped over something. So in Call the Public, if you want to speak to the board, if you want to address it, please use the Raise Your Hand function in Zoom, or wave at us, and you'll be recognized, and we can go from there. So with that being said, we'd like to start off the meeting with a moment of silent reflection. If you would join me in that, please. Thank you. Next, the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Clerk Hundley, roll call, please.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here, Heartland Township, Livingston County, Michigan.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here, participating from Genoa Township, Livingston County, Michigan.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Good evening. Participating from the city of Brighton, Livingston County, Michigan.
Commissioner Reader.
Your official township, county of Livingston, state of Michigan.
Commissioner Helserman.
I'm present from a handy township, Livingston County, Michigan.
Commissioner Drick.
Present, located city Howell, Livingston County, state of Michigan.
Commissioners Ajack.
Good evening, everyone. Present from Marion Township, county of Livingston, Michigan.
Commissioner Gross.
Present, participating from Green Oak Township, Livingston County, Michigan.
And Commissioner Plank.
Good evening. Present, coming to you from Green Oak Township, Livingston County, Michigan.
Of course, Ms. Present.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is correspondence. We have received correspondence from Wexford County Resolution 20-30 in support of local business.
Moves Ajack.
I have a motion by Commissioners Ajack to place on file. Is there a second?
Support Gross.
Support by Commissioner Gross. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioners Ajack.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is our first call to the public. If you, anybody in the public wishing to address the Board of Commissioners this evening, if you could use the Zoom Raise Your Hand function or wave at us, and then we'll be called upon. I don't see any Zoom.
Commissioner Nakagiri, there is a person down on Galaxy Tab 88.
Okay, the person, there looks like Galaxy Tab 88. If you could provide your name and address, and then you have three minutes to address the board.
Okay, my name is Bill Heim, and I'm sitting here with Pat Hole. We're representing Hamburg Township. I happen to be a trustee for several years now, and Pat is our supervisor for Hamburg Township. I want to say thanks to the Board of Commissioners for putting the COVID vaccination rollout plan on the agenda. And I want to give special thanks to Jay Growth. We've traded several phone calls with him, both Pat and I. But we're looking to tune into your meeting is where we really want to hear a rollout plan. And that rollout plan, starting with and assuming you get the vaccination delivered to the health department, and then what's the steps after that? Where are the vaccinations going? Is it going to be MIERs? Is it going to be COVID? Do people have to call in and make it? Just basically, we're looking for any detailed that will be coming hopefully shortly to the people. So our Hamburg Township residents will get a perspective of where we're going from here. So we appreciate any help and clarification and details that can be included in the rollout plan or the health department.
Pat Hole, Hamburg Township, 8207 Chambers Road. You know, we still understand and appreciate the shortage on the vaccine, that it's not coming through the pipeline. But I guess what we're really looking for is some kind of plan. Residents are very active. I get some phone calls, some walk-ins. So a plan that we can forward to them so that when the vaccine comes, they know what's going to happen. I know that you can't define exactly when we're going to get the necessary vaccine. Thank you very much.
The other body in the public wishing to address the Board of Commissioners. I'm not seeing anybody else. Cindy's shaking her head no. So I'm going to close the Call the Public. There is another opportunity at the end of the meeting to address the board also. Moving on is the, item number seven on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes. Minutes dated January 4th, January 6th, and closed session minutes dated January 6th. Is there a motion?
Move Lawrence.
Support.
Support Gross.
The discussion, corrections, additions to the minutes. Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Clerk Hundley.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ajack.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item eight on the agenda is table items. We have no table items from previous meetings. So we'll move to item number nine and look for a motion for approval of our agenda.
Move Lawrence.
Support Griffith.
The discussions. Hearing none, roll call, please, Clerk Hundley.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajack.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 10 on the agenda is reports. Tonight, we have with us our Public Health Officer Diane McCormick, who is going to give us an update on COVID-19 vaccination. So I'll turn the floor over to Director, Public Health Officer McCormick.
Well, good evening, all. I'm also joined by Dr. Juan Marquez and Elaine Brown to assist in, so we provide the information on where we're at with the COVID-19 vaccination. First of all, we did, the health department received our first shipment December the 23rd. We received a total since then of 1,200 doses. We are receiving the Moderna. Right now, there's two vaccines that are out there, and hopefully, in the next several weeks, we'll see a couple more vaccines coming on the market. But right now, we are being shipped Moderna at 1,200 doses, which have or will be administered in entirety by the end of this week. We were informed that our next shipment of vaccine, which we don't know, it's an unknown quantity of vaccine, will arrive sometime the week of January the 25th, which makes it difficult to plan not knowing the quantity. So we're hopeful to receive some type of word on the amount of vaccine that we're going to be receiving, hopefully, this week or early next week. We were scheduled to receive our shipment of second dose allotments this week. So this is a two-dose series, about 28 days apart. There is ample second doses that have been held back. So we're not concerned with all the clinics that we've had to administer the 1,200 doses. We will be receiving, I believe, this week, if I'm not mistaken. Elaine, is that correct? Or next week, soon, the second shipment of the second dose of the vaccine. So, and those clinics are already established and already populated, and we're ready to go for the second dose clinics. We are scheduled to receive second dose allotments by the end of this week. So let me talk about the phases. The state health department has adopted the CDC's priority groups on those who receive the vaccine first, and they're within phases. The first phase that we were in was Phase 1A. And there's approximately, here in Livingston County, in that eligible group, right around 3,000 in the 1A group, that we're still vaccinating at this time. The hospital's also helping. So the two entities that are receiving vaccine in the state are hospital systems and local health departments. So those that are in the first group of priorities are your healthcare workers, your long-term care facilities, and residents EMS, your medical first responders, and other physician organizations, urgent cares, dental clinics, private practice physicians, optometrists are examples of those that are in that first phase that's allowed for the vaccine. So we have yet to complete that 1A priority group because of the vaccine limitations. But on a positive note, I'd like to share that St. Joe's Livingston has agreed to take on vaccinating the remainder of the 1A group, but it's contingent upon vaccine availability. So once we find out more about what's going to be available, the hospital is positioned to go ahead and finish off that 1A group. And then we, at the local health department level, will be able to roll out the 1B group with our next shipments, hopefully. That's the plan, anyway. So then, let's look at last week. Last week, Governor Whitmer announced that a partial phase, which is titled the Phase 1B Group, would be eligible to receive the vaccine if it was available. The Phase 1B includes your frontline essential workers, your childcare and pre-K through high school educators, and individuals over 65, which are eligible if the vaccine is available. And this group here in Livingston County, our estimate is right around 35,000 people that would now be eligible. So our future plans is, you know, once the governor announced opening up the vaccine to the larger group, you know, obviously, our phones began ringing off the hook. We've received hundreds of emails and sent appointments that they want to get access to the vaccine. You know, we were able to quickly establish a link for people that are seeking the vaccine to provide their contact information so we can put them in priority groups. And I don't know if any of you have had an opportunity to go on that link. It does ask a series of questions to make sure that we're collecting information on the targeted priority group. And so far, we've had about 11,000 people that have signed up that are interested in receiving the vaccine. So we feel that there is at least some communication going out there that people are aware of the link, probably do a better job, as Pat Hole had mentioned. You know, we need to get that information out to the townships. We've sent out press releases that do go out to all the local units of government. So to be able to put that up on all of our township websites and in multiple locations on where people can at least go to a link and provide us with contact information. So when there are available appointments, we can push those appointments out. Obviously, it is a first-come, first-served on the appointments as vaccine is available. But as the weeks roll out, we do know that we will be receiving additional vaccine. Our supplies will be larger. So we have worked with community partners and have, not only here at the Livingston County Health Department, because we do have the ability to roll out, you know, 1,200 vaccines a week here at the health department. But we're looking at school locations and some other off-site locations, possible drive-through locations. So when we do have ample vaccine where we can host maybe 1,000 clinic a day or 2,000 clinic a day appointments, that we can do those offsites. And we have community partners that will also be assisting in our vaccination efforts, which includes Michigan National Guard. The hospital has indicated that they are going to join forces with us and assist in our vaccination clinics, EMS, and some of the health organizations. They also indicated that when we go out into the community to do larger events, that they will assist in providing us with some vaccinators. We're also encouraged that our first responders, our police and fire, are also stepping forward, besides our schools. I can't forget our schools. Our superintendents have been wonderful in assisting with volunteers to help at these clinics. So those will add at least more opportunities in larger settings out there. But we really need, the unknown amount is, we just don't have enough vaccine. And it might take a few months even before we do have vaccine in larger quantities. But we're also hopeful is that our healthcare organizations like IHA, Michigan Medicine, will also be providing opportunities out there to their clients within the priority groups. And so those that are connected with those healthcare organizations will be receiving, hopefully soon, some information on opportunities where they can get vaccinated within their own private healthcare settings. We also know that we have several providers, pharmacies in our county that will also be direct ship of the vaccine once it is more readily available. And I keep saying more readily available, and there's a lot of information I just don't know. And it really depends on the rollout from the federal government down to the states. And I think you hear that constantly, and you're hearing that from me also, because there's a lot of unknowns with all of that. And I want to put Juan on the spot, because I know that Juan has been having a lot of conversations with our healthcare partners out there. And I know there's other opportunities. Really just can't put it on the backs of the local health department. You know, if you're looking at our total population here in Livingston County, that's a lot to put on the local health departments. And that's why I encourage to see that as part of the state plan, there's going to be multiple opportunities out there in our communities. It's just not right now. And Juan, maybe you can share some of the insights that you're hearing and some of the calls that you're on with the medical providers.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. So I think that there's a few different avenues that are currently being worked on to vaccinate folks. That's a little bit separate from the local health department. So one of them is really through the health system. So both Michigan Medicine and IHA, as well as St. Joe's, are receiving or will receive a significant amount of vaccine to vaccinate their patients. Now, we have established, I think, pretty, very good relationships with both Michigan Medicine and IHA and Joe's, and are working with them to figure out what is the best collaboration to vaccinate everybody. What I mean by that is, we don't want to go to the same target. We want to figure out where the gaps are, right? So one of the ways that we started working on this is that, you know, potentially, you know, the health systems will vaccinate those greater than 65 as part of 1B, and we'll focus on potentially essential workers, right? So that's one collaboration that we're working with. You know, potentially, depending, you know, if they are able to accommodate certain essential workers that we are having a hard time vaccinating in a timely manner, you know, we'll have conversations with them and discuss the gaps and have them, you know, additionally help us out with, you know, certain segments of essential workers. The other one is really, I think, I don't think Dan mentioned it, but you know, there's a push to involve pharmacies as well, specifically some of the larger ones. So there's some opportunity to vaccinate through pharmacies as well, a few different models that are available. And that's more of a state-run program. So we get input into what we think is the best model for our area. But, you know, we're waiting to hear back more about that.
Elaine, did you have anything else to add? You know, once we get our next shipment of supply and we're able to know what group we're targeting, we will be able to post on our site where you can go in and sign up for an appointment and push it out, especially for those that are signing up now on our website, but also out in the community through press releases. So people are aware of when they have an opportunity to seek an appointment. Now, granted, the appointments are only going to be available for the amount of vaccine that we have. But we're looking at standing up vaccination clinics, you know, daily, even into the weekends. We're looking at, I mentioned a mass vaccination site had a really good meeting with some emergency responders and Howell Schools to look at one of our first mass vaccination clinics at the Howell High School on a Saturday or Sunday, and/or they would also be willing to go on a virtual Friday if we had enough vaccine to do three days. And then I was encouraged on a call that I was on today that the Michigan National Guard is also ready and able to assist in any mass vaccination clinics. I threw out a number, is if we needed 20 from the National Guard vaccinators, would that be available? And it was, sure, we can get you what you need. So I was very encouraged to see, not only with our community partners here and what we have in our cache of vaccinators, that there are opportunities with the Michigan National Guard and even with pharmacies to assist with mass vaccination clinics. There's also opportunities for drive-through clinics that we will be exploring. You know, I hesitate to do a mass vaccination drive-through clinic in February. I think it might be somewhat dangerous for our first responders out there that are vaccinating. If you don't know what the temperature's going to be, if it's down in the teens, that could be brutal, but we'd certainly take a look at that. But we have several parks, recreational parks, Kensington Island Lake and others that would be willing to partner if we wanted to do a mass drive-through or other locations that we could use too. So those are all being explored right now. And, you know, I'm encouraged as the weeks fold out and there's more opportunities for vaccine to come here into our community that we've got partners available to run the clinics, and we at least have some locations identified to begin rolling that out. And as partners come on, the healthcare systems, the pharmacies, and other groups, it will add more opportunities out there to the various phases that are rolled out.
The only thing that I was going to add, Diane, is that we're trying to be recognized that some people might not have internet access or might not be able to navigate some of that. So we're trying to be as helpful as we can by filling out the interest form for them right now if they don't have access, and then having the ability in the future when appointments are available to assist them in scheduling the appointment. But we're trying to have as many people do it as they can online, but providing some assistance if needed.
So you bring up a good question that is an important. We have many, many seniors that don't have access to the internet. We recognize that, and the state recognizes that. And so I'll be working with various partners. I chair the Leadership Livingston Council on Aging. So I'll be working with that work group on how that we could assist in scheduling the appointments for those that don't have access to the internet. Also, the state is standing up 211. So those that don't have internet access will be able to contact 211, and they will be able to go to local health department's scheduler site and assist the senior or those that don't have internet in scheduling their appointment. So those are some things in dialogue that's being talked about out there. 211 is definite. We'll be connecting with our 211 through the United Way and looking at when we're able to open it up broadly in the 1B category, how they can assist and then tailor it to Livingston County residents. So, thanks for bringing that up.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. If Diane, you're ready.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just a clarification, Diane. You received 1,200 doses in December 23rd. Does the hospital receive, I mean, was it 1,200 for the whole county? Or the hospital also received, St. Joe's also received?
That's a good question. Our first shipment, we received 900. Our second shipment, we received 300 to the Livingston County Health Department. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and Juan and Elaine, correct me, I believe the hospital received 1,000 doses?
I think you're right, Diane.
Okay.
Okay. So it's in addition to what you received?
Yeah, right. And the hospital, it was tackling their healthcare workers in the hospital and those that are within their system.
Okay, thank you. My next question is... My next question is, how is it determined the amount of vaccinations that each county will receive?
That's a good question. You know, there's two vaccines out there. There's Pfizer and Moderna.
Correct, and we've received the Moderna.
The Moderna vaccine, and let me speak a little bit about when Pfizer got approved by the feds, that vaccine was going to roll out to the pharmacies that was vaccinating, the nursing homes. Right now, and I will say that currently in Livingston County, I think most, if not all, of our kind of good care nursing home facilities are signed up with the program, and there's vaccinations going on right now here in Livingston County in our nursing homes and their staff. It's not part of the health department doing it. It's part of the pharmacies and the CDC and what they put together. So Pfizer was going to be used in that initiative. When Moderna got approved, they took the supply that was going to come down to the local level of Moderna, because Moderna is so much easier to handle and utilize than the Pfizer vaccine. So there's more Pfizer vaccine than Moderna vaccine. And then what went out to the population, to the counties, was based upon demographics and population. And Juan, maybe you can expand on that better than I.
Yeah, so I think that's a good explanation. I think initially, the first, so like Dan said, the thought was initially that Moderna was going to be used as the regular source, but it essentially got shipped over to the pharmacy partnership. Now that, when it's going to start being more widely available, it's going to be allocated based on to, basically, it's a formula that sounds like three quarters of the allocation will be based on population, specifically greater than 65 for the current allotment. And then a quarter of it's going to be based on the number of essential workers that the state has calculated based on different projections. So that will be sort of rolling forward once we reestablish regular supply chain of Moderna.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, a couple of questions for Diane.
Well, I'd like to finish, Commissioner Plank, I'm sorry. My next question is, you had the 1A group who received the first vaccinations, and then they have a series for the second time. Is that vaccination different in its makeup? Or strength, or is it the same one being given twice?
Yes, it is the same vaccine. It's a second dose of the same vaccine.
Of the same vaccine, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I want to ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Plank.
My question is, is there a central or a nationwide place that's being used by all entities to reference? Because I was thinking about people who either A, come in, get their first dose and never come back to get the second dose, or maybe they wait too long. I believe I read somewhere where you have to get the second dose within a certain timeframe. So I'm curious at whether or not all of these entities that are giving out these doses, whether it's Moderna or Pfizer, is it being tracked nationwide? So that if my neighbor down the street went into the pharmacy and received the first dose and the second dose she goes in to receive at another entity, whether that be the health department or a hospital, how is that being tracked to make sure that they don't get A, more than they need to get, or B, it's tracked to say, you know, you need to come in and get your second dose? And what happens if they don't get that second dose? Do they have to go through the series again?
So anyone that is giving vaccine, COVID vaccine, has to participate in the Michigan Care Improvement Registry, which is MICR. And so all doses need to be entered within 24 hours of the vaccine being given. So there is a way to look and see what dose the person had the first time, and there is an ability to send reminders to them if they don't come back for their second dose. Sorry if you're hearing feedback, because I apologize for that. And there's, you had asked if they need to start over again. So there is a four-day grace period where they can get it four days prior to the 20th day. But if it's after, you just get it when the opportunity arises, so you don't need to start again.
Just a follow-up question. You mentioned that there is a database that they're entering that the person received the dose or the second dose, or let's just say they received the first dose. It's common then for when someone goes through a drive-through or to another facility that that information has to be looked up to ensure that they're not overdosing someone? Or that it's being done at the proper time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question for Diane. Diane, what can a person outside our county, if they are in the qualifying group, get their vaccination in our county?
Yes and no. No, if they don't live in our county. And yes, if they don't live in our county, but they work for a school or is in one of the priority groups that we're trying to target. So, you know, the vaccine coming down to the jurisdictions is based on population. So obviously, if we're doing a bang-up job getting to all our phases that we're getting to, to add some Oakland County residents or other residents that are around the state seeing that our process is quicker and better, we really can't, at this time, accommodate them.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of comments on this topic as well.
Well, go ahead, Commissioner Zajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I think I just want to reiterate really the Herculean effort that's clear from the Health Department. Director McCormick and I have had a couple of conversations. It actually goes all the way back to when the first contact tracing was taking place in the county back in the football season. And she called me up because she knew I coached over at Howell, and she talked to me about some of the processes and the procedures then. And I've been very impressed. I think it's important to realize that her office is utilizing as much of the federal funds as possible in order to take on not only this vaccine effort, but they're continuing with contact tracing, the investigations, fielding phone calls, trying to keep up with changes in Lansing. So my hat is off to Director McCormick's office. And I also want to applaud the residents of our county. I think there's been examples throughout the county, dealing, or throughout the state, rather, dealing with this, the lack of vaccinations or the lack of transparency in process that has caused a little bit of unrest, and we've not seen that here in the county. That's certainly a credit to Director McCormick and her team, but then also to the residents of the county. My hat's off for being patient, and even though this is a difficult time, thank you for your understanding. In putting this quick report together, I spoke with Director McCormick's office. I spoke with Senator Tice's office, and I also had conversation with Howell Schools. And I have some statistics. I don't know if there's causation or correlation that deals with these numbers, but I think there are numbers that need to be understood and at least transparent to everyone, not only the commission, but the public as well. Dealing with Senator Tice's office, I gathered some information with regard to vaccinations. Livingston County being the 11th largest by county or by population county in the state, yet we've received only the 35th highest amount of doses of vaccinations. There are 25 counties with less population than Livingston County that received more doses than Livingston County did. With regard to a couple of examples, Mason County, which is up in the Luddington area, has a population of about 29,000. It has received 2,700 doses, which in terms of cases per dose is .33. Osceola County, which is near Cadillac, 23,000 population approximately, has received 2,800 doses and a case per dose of 0.26. Dickinson County, which is up in UP, near Iron Mountain, 25,000 approximately residents, 3,325 doses and a case per dose of approximately 0.59. Livingston County, 193,000 approximately residents, 2,200 doses and cases per dose of 3.18. The other piece of information, kind of gleaned through discussions with Howell Schools, looking at the CARES Act funding, related issue, but slightly different. If we look at what Howell has received through state allocation and CARES Act funding, it's approximately $60 per student. And as example, Pontiac has received $1,218 per student, Detroit, $1,835 per student, and Flint, $3,024 per student. So again, not a causation-correlation discussion, but rather for information discussion that we perhaps should consider as we address these issues going forward. Again, thanks to Director McCormick and her team Herculean effort, thanks to the residents, and thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Any other questions from commissioners? Anything further from Director McCormick or anybody else from the health side of things?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Houser.
First of all, I want to thank the Health Department for all of their work. I've heard some very positive remarks in the community about how you have helped certain sectors of our economy. And I do appreciate all you do to make our community safe and to make our community a place where business can be conducted safely. I appreciate the work you've done to help businesses to keep open, open safely. Thank you very much to Diane and to your crew.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question, only if all the commissioners have had an opportunity to ask questions or speak.
Anybody, any commissioner who hasn't had an opportunity to ask a question?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions for Ms. McCormick or Dr. Marquez. I just would like to echo comments made by the other commissioners. I've had conversations with Director McCormick. And I think at this point in time, the only thing I'm troubled about are the statistics that Commissioners Zajak brought forth. That's troubling to me. There appears to be a significant inequity with respect to the availability of the vaccine. And I just wish that somehow or other we could find out why that is. That's all I have to say at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Any other commissioner who hasn't got a chance to speak to the issue? Go ahead, Commissioner Lawrence.
Just one final question to Diane. What can we as commissioners do? Do we contact our federal representatives? Ask them how we can? Listening to Commissioner Zajak's numbers is of concern to me as well. What can we do to help you get more vaccinations in our area?
And I do appreciate that question. At this point in time, you know, I, let's see what we get in our next shipment. Is it 300 doses or is it 1,500 doses? And I think that, you know, as vaccine starts ramping up nationwide, and there's also a lot of discussion, and I think that there will be some movement in the very near future. You know, the CDC is holding back 50% of the vaccine for the second doses. I, when I spoke to Mona Shan with Congresswoman Slotman's office, is, you know, vaccine is being produced a day. I don't believe that holding back 50% that a portion, more of a portion of that needs to come out to the states. And I think that would help out along with vaccine being ramped up for both Pfizer and Moderna. And then we'll soon, the pharmacy and nursing home, that project will be completed. And so those doses will also add to the inventory. The state needs more inventory to push out. And it's just going to take a few more weeks before we have clarity in what we can anticipate, and then how we can better plan our vaccination clinics based upon the allotments that we get. If we only get 300 or 1,000, that's going to tell us how we plan our vaccine clinics. But if we get more than that, we can look broader and put our plans into place to do mass vaccination clinics, like many of the counties want to start planning, but really can't. And hopefully, the healthcare systems, they'll also see an increase in ramp up in their cash and will also provide broader opportunities out there beyond what the local health department is doing. It's time right now.
Thank you very much. Thank you to you, your team, Elaine. I know you've been putting in a lot of hours. Thank you, Doctor. We appreciate you being here this evening.
I have a question, unless there's any other commissioners that have. I know, you know, I've chatted with you, Director McCormick and IT Director Toby, regarding, you know, other IT solutions. You know, I know we have on our website a form to fill out if you're interested in vaccine. But I have a couple of questions. One, the IT solution that is currently being discussed in addition to the form on the website, I wonder if you could talk about what that does for us? And secondly, along the, you know, the IT solution, does the state of Michigan have any online registry? I, to me, if you're going to do something online, I kind of think, you know, it would have been better to have it done, you know, at a state level as opposed to every county having come up with its own solution. If either of you two could talk to that issue, I'd appreciate it.
I'm going to start. I might hand it over to Chris. And yes, the state has looked at a system. It's called Solve, I believe is the name of it. But it's very, very basic. It still requires a lot of manual manipulating, and it really doesn't necessarily do the job of categorizing and some of the backend IT stuff that we would really like to see a good system do. So Chris has done a bang-up job of spending a lot of hours since Friday in looking at a vendor's system. We did a demo, matter of fact, just got off the demo about 10 minutes before the Board of Commissioners meeting, which looks excellent in my book, but I think there is a substantial cost to it. But we're going to explore it. Chris, did you want to talk a little bit about that platform?
Yeah, so the state's platform, you know, we're going to continue to look
Yeah, so the state's platform, you know, we're going to continue to look into. The Health Department, we finally just got the demo together a little over two hours ago for them to take a look at that. So we're trying to plan for a deeper dive. But the functionality there allows for our constituents to be able to fill out an online form. As part of that process, they're able to schedule their appointments and locations based on that. And then some of the features are a deeper dive into the health side of it. But we have some questions as to uploads to the state data systems in Miker that we're going to have to work through. So we're working as rapidly as we can, Mr. Chairman, to work on this together and come up with a good solution here.
Thank you very much. Any other, I don't know, questions or comments before we move on in the agenda? Really, you know, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, you know, I want to thank you, Diane, and your team, Dr. Marquez, Elaine Brown and everybody for the hard work. I had an opportunity to tour the vaccination clinic that was conducted last Thursday. I mean, there's a lot of logistics that's involved in getting the vaccine out and a lot of hard work. And it's greatly appreciated and want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that being said, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item is the approval of consent agenda items. Before I ask for a motion, I do want to, for the benefit of our new commissioners, just review the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, any resolution on the consent agenda was placed there because we had unanimous, you know, vote in the Finance Committee. However, any single commissioner could ask for any item to be removed from the consent agenda, either for further discussion or because, you know, they change their mind on how they want to vote. So I just want to offer the opportunity to any commissioner. I wanted to share that information with new commissioners and move forward from there. I I am pretty certain that Commissioner Ajax indicated to me earlier today that he wanted to remove one item off of that. Is that correct?
That's right, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move item E, which is twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one dash zero-zero-eight from the consent agenda, move it to resolutions for consideration for purposes of discussion only.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion. So we'll move that item to the resolution for consideration. That's item number E. So I'm asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item E. Is there a motion?
I'll move Helsner.
Motion by Helsner, support. By.
Support Ajax.
By Ajax. Any discussion? Seeing, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
You're muted.
Excuse me, I was. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we'll move on to resolutions for consider consideration. The first one we'll talk about is twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one dash zero-zero-eight. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of cybersecurity enhancements and replacements from Palo Alto Networks from information technology. Is there a motion?
Moves Ajax.
Support Lawrence.
We have a motion in support. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Ajax.
So during the discussion on this resolution for for the purposes of the general government meeting as well as in finance, I again want to thank Director Toby and his team. They were very well prepared. They had answers to most of the questions that we asked in the general government meeting. And then they were able to follow up during the finance meeting. One of the points that I had brought up during both of those meetings is with regard to the process for handling, really the liability, the warranty, the indemnification issues that exist with regard to cybersecurity. I do know now through the discussion that there is cybersecurity insurance, which is very, which makes me feel better about our plan and the process we are using to approach cybersecurity issues. But I just have a couple of other comments because I know that the next step will be for for the attorneys to take a look at the final contract. And I want to make some points in terms of the importance of understanding subject matter with regard to this type of contract that that I think is important for all commissioners to 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 understand and then to use in order to make a decision as we move forward with the expectation that 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 those concerns will be addressed. So there are several issues that cybersecurity presents. I know this through my experience. I know many others have experience with cybersecurity. But in the legal profession, the importance of being able to define really what it is to be reasonably secure, whether we address the plans that are in place, the hypotheticals that have been run through by the team. And I know that is an example of Director Toby's hard work already. They've done some testing and analysis with regard to this new system. But also understanding what the key steps are in the response process. Should there be an issue, understanding what the, who the key individuals are, what the key process steps are. And in doing so, in understanding from an industry best practice perspective, I know that Director Toby and his team have that knowledge. It's apparent to me through the discussions that we've had, both in preparation for the general government meeting as well as the finance meeting and even thereafter. I'm very comfortable with his understanding. And I think it's very important that the department translate that understanding of the subject matter to our very capable attorneys as they review the contract. This is a very nuanced subject that I think requires a very detailed discussion between the subject matter experts and the attorneys so that we take into consideration really the technical expertise of our subject matter experts and be able to ensure that when we discuss issues of warranty and indemnification, that it's not just the existence thereof of a term, but rather those terms addressing the key risks that are associated with not only the ever-changing landscape of cybersecurity and cyber attacks, but then also keeping in mind regulations as they exist, whether it be the current regulations in the state of Michigan, which are not nearly as far along as, say, the California rules or the Biometric Information Act that exists at the federal level. Just a lot of key cybersecurity cybersecurity-related regulations that need to be considered so that we can say we've checked the box on really what it means to be reasonably secure. There are key issues, certainly in the corporate world of cybersecurity breaches, whether it be Equifax, Yahoo, Anthem with health in the healthcare industry. And we're certainly dealing with that type of personal information as well, perhaps not the scale. But the the type of information is there. And the last thing that I'll say for commissioners and then I don't, and I'll certainly give Director Toby a chance to respond to anything if he sees necessary. But I did have the question with regard to the how well-known Palo Alto is in the industry, how well-known Gartner is within the industry. I had the opportunity to speak with some subject matter experts outside of the county, just again through my daily, through my day job, asking those questions about, you know, do you know these guys and are they are they good? The response was overwhelmingly, yes, top of the line, very well-respected within the industry, very reputable. And they've been around for a long time, making the types of assessments that they did with regard to Gartner, you know, comparing the various different potential solutions. And then with Palo Alto being the solution, it's that issue. So I don't have any questions. I wanted to make those statements. And certainly Director Toby, if there's anything you'd like to respond to, I would welcome that discussion here and commissioners as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioners Ajax. Director Toby, any thoughts?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to thank Mr. Ajax for his very well-thought-out comments there. We will definitely be following up with the county's legal team in regard to that and pursuing some of those avenues that you just recommended there. So thank you again for the comments. Always appreciated.
Anything else from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gross.
I would just like to make a comment that a long time ago in a previous life, I was involved in the IT world for a number of years. And during that time span, I got to know that the Gartner Group is is an excellent group. They have been widely regarded as experts in the field of information technology for many, many years. And I think with their analysis of this project in in support of the recommendation to go with Palo Alto, I think we could be better positioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Any anybody else? Hearing or seeing none, we do have a motion in support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Muted.
You are muted. Yes. Thank you. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Our final resolution for the evening, twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one dash zero-zero-nine is a resolution approving the tentative agreement between the Livingston County Board of Commissioners and the union representing nine-one-one dispatchers. Is there a motion?
Move Lawrence.
Or Helsner.
Have a motion in support. This is Human Resources, Jennifer Palm Bush, thinking.
Yes, yeah, I can do a quick, a quick overview.
Okay.
We, so based on the vote results at Finance last week, we took a wishes of the board to the union, came up with a revised tentative agreement that does not include the the exception that the union was looking for. So there's a, they're strictly just removing coverage for abortions in the tentative agreement. The union took that to a vote over the weekend and voted twenty-one to one to ratify that agreement. So the board action is the last step necessary to to approve the agreement.
Thank you, Jennifer Palm Bush. I know we chatted about this extensively in Finance. And, you know, we made our voice known in terms of our position on this issue. We basically got what we wanted and I but if there's further comments, you know, or questions, we'll open it up for questions now from commissioners.
Chairman.
Now Commissioner Gross.
First of all, I'm pleased that we are going to be able to vote to approve this agreement. But in reviewing the package earlier today, I noticed page one sixty-four of the agenda packet that the final page to sign off on this contract agreement with the union, there is provision for signature by former chairman Donald Parker. And so I think I think that needs to be taken care of.
Yeah, that will be updated.
Okay.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Drick. Thank you, Chairman. Jennifer, was there any other ask that they made in order to take out the exception?
No, none asked, none offered.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you, Commissioner Drick. Anything further from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, one quick comment from me.
Commissioners Ajax.
Jennifer, thanks so much for your work on this. I appreciate you sharing also the full contract. That was the open question from myself and I think one other, at least one other commissioner, just the opportunity to review the entirety. So again, thank you for that and thanks for your hard work.
You're welcome.
Any anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment.
Commissioner Helsner.
I just want to thank all the team that was involved with this. I guess both on ours, on our team and the union team. It seemed like this was, it's going to be a very good agreement in the work. And I'm glad that we didn't have to reopen it because I think that the terms, the terms of the contract look very good to me. And I'm happy that Chad has worked so hard to get and has a good relationship with his team that he can do things that are both beneficial to to his workload and his employees and what's good for the county also. And just just thank, thank, thank everyone involved in this. Very good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Helsner. Anybody else? Seeing none, we do have a motion to support the roll call.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our second call to the public. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to address the board of commissioners this evening? If so, please use the Zoom raise your hand function or wave at us otherwise. I do see Lance Schumacher with his Zoom raised hand. Go ahead, Lance.
Thanks, Chairman. Just a question, and it looks like all the people from the Health Department are gone, but the question, oh, there's Diane. The question I had was, out of the three thousand eligible in 1A, maybe it's too soon to tell, but how many of those three thousand actually gotten their their vaccine?
Actually, in Call the Public, it's it's a one-way conversation. And if you want to, if you know the answer, you can answer it quickly. Not, okay, so you can follow up with Mr. Schumacher later? Okay. I see a raised hand from Mr. Bob Pataki, if you could give us your address, Mr. Pataki, and and before you address the board.
Yes, sir. My name is Bob Pataki. I live at eighty-eighty-four twenty Woodland Shore Drive. I assume my audio is coming through.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just a short comment on the Health Department presentation. Last Monday, I realized that people, friends in Florida were getting vaccinations at sixty-five years old. So I started research on what might be available here in Livingston. Talked to many people and researched many opportunities. My basic observation was is that the Health Department has done a heck of a job. They are tired, they are slammed, and they need help. They need manpower. You need to move some of your people out of other non-essential activities and support them. The second observation was that I that I have friends who are able to get vaccinated in Florida at sixty-five. They have appointments that have started starting next Wednesday. The city of Detroit is vaccinating people over sixty-five. First come, first served down in Cobble Hall starting Wednesday. I agree that Livingston is not getting its fair share of vaccine and we don't have the opportunities. And your hundred-and-ninety-one thousand citizens, according to the last census, are not getting a fair opportunity at very, very important lifesaving medication. So I'd ask you to use your influence with your with your senators and senators and congressmen in Lansing and also all of your contacts in Washington and get a fair share of vaccine to your citizens here in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pataki. Anybody else wishing to address the Board of Commissioners, please? Indicate so by the raise your hand function or Zoom or wave at us. I don't see any. Seeing none, I am going to close the call to the public and ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move Helsner.
Port Plank.
Motion to support Clerk Conley, roll call, please.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
You're unmute.
Thank you. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for your participation. I will see you at the next meeting.
Good luck.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Bye bye.
Great for our country.